I call the March 2020 USD 350 Board Meeting in order. Welcome visitors. Any additions or changes?
I have none.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President, I move that the board approved the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Okay, motion carried. Consent agenda.
Just a one note about the February minutes are included on a separate tab there, if you didn't catch that. But otherwise, there's nothing to report on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move that the board approved the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Patron comments? First item, Rec Commission building.
This is a continued item that we've been discussing for some time now. The recommended option that we're proposing is that the district would acquire the building that we're talking about at 205 East Second. This would be Tom Gardner's building. The district would acquire that through a lease purchase agreement with the bank. That would be for five years. And then we would turn around and lease it to the Rec Commission for five years at essentially the same payment. It would be an annual payment, about $14,000, give or take. And then after the five years is up, the board at that time and the Rec Commission at that time would need to determine how to move forward. Whether they, the board just leases it to them for essentially no cost, kind of like we do with the city and the football field, or whether we would deed the property to them. That's probably the easiest way to go about that. A lease purchase for us to acquire a building is a legal process. That's fine with the attorneys. For us to lease to the Rec Commission, they're legally allowed to lease property. So to hang up there is the purchase. Any legal fees and legal costs would need to be reimbursed as part of this.
Yeah.
Gentlemen?
I don't have anything else to add other than our attorney felt that that was the best direction to go would be a lease purchase, or lease from the school, if the school did a lease purchase as opposed to a lump sum payment like we were kind of talking about before. I mean, it's an annual payment, but it's still over the course of five years as opposed to one lump sum for the price.
So the action that I'm recommending that the board would like to do this would just be direct me, to direct me to put all this in motion, to get with the bank, to draft a lease purchase agreement, have the attorney review it, draft a lease agreement that the Rec Commission can review and approve. And then the next meeting or whenever that all can be done, we would need to finalize that and approve those agreements. I didn't want to have the attorney go to any of that work before I knew that this board was comfortable moving forward with that. So there is another step that we'd need a final, final agreement that yes, we approved this lease purchase, we approved this lease agreement.
Do we have an idea how big the legal fees would be?
I don't know. I don't have a good estimate for that. I would guess 2,000 at the most, but...
Okay.
Are lawyers at this point feel comfortable going this route?
Yes. Yep. And I know there's been some question of why would the school district be involved in this? Well, the law doesn't allow the Rec Commission to purchase property. So I think the intent there from the legislature was to ensure that the governing body that oversees the, that is the taxing authority, or has some say, like the city and the Rec Commission, that one of those two entities that will remain regardless of what happens has a final say in that. If, I see no reason this would happen, but if the Rec Commission owns property and they disband, voters decide we don't want a Rec Commission anymore, joint Rec Commission, it disbands, then that property comes back to the school district. So it is important that we are, this board is involved in any property, real property transactions that take place. So I think the legislative intent was that either the school district or the city council is involved in that to provide the property. This is not unusual. It's happened in other school districts. A lot of times it would be, the school district would be also using the facility. For example, you know, Sterling, they have a community weight room facility that people can use after hours, and the school district uses that too. So it's kind of a joint property. But we don't have a use for the building, so that's a little different than a situation like that. So the question to you was, are you comfortable with doing that?
So again, it could be USD 350 or the city of St. John.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Or they could lease from a private, I mean, you know, they could lease directly from the owner. With this arrangement, they're assured that the building is secured for whatever lease payments they're putting forward. I think it's the intent of this board that we don't have a use for it now, and we won't in 10 years. It's, the intent is to acquire the building so our Rec Commission, we're the taxing entity for, has a building to use that they, that they would like to use.
And they would cover all our legal costs at this point with our lawyers.
Sound right, gentlemen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Think you're something comfortable with it, if it hurts a part?
Yeah, I'm comfortable. And I would draft a letter that essentially says, you know, we can't have an agreement that says we're going to do this lease purchase and then give you the property. The attorneys were not comfortable with that because that's essentially us purchasing it for them. So it would be up to the board, again, in five years to determine what to do, but draft a letter to say our intent is that we don't want to use the building, we won't allow the Rec to use it indefinitely, but that decision will have to be made when the lease terms are up.
I have problems.
As far as labor, that's a concern. How much are we going to be doing for the lease? You know, once the attorney does it, you know, we'll have a little, some phone calls, but yearly, we've just cut a check to the bank and received a check from the Rec Commission. Any insurance cost to this or liability? No. Essentially, nothing.
Will they recover by the end of the year?
Yeah.
The bank has no concerns as far as it's going to be leased to the school, but another entity is going to be running it?
No. No, I've talked with Chad about that. He is comfortable with that arrangement, so...
There is some concern with public perception still to date. So the best thing we can do is continue to communicate on this subject.
Okay.
To the community.
Everyone, your newsletter notes or whatever can explain it.
Sure.
Going out to the public, just let the Rec Commission camp of property funnel through the school.
All right.
That'd be great. Okay. Another motion. Darren?
Mr. President, I move that the board direct the superintendent to draft a lease purchase agreement and a lease agreement with the building at 205 East Second in St. John.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the board direct the superintendent to draft a lease purchase agreement and a lease agreement for the building at 205 East Second in St. John. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. House renovation.
I don't mean this in a bad way, but when you get attorneys involved, it kind of slows things down, which you got to do them right. You have other people involved. Got the attorney, our board attorney working on the transfer of the deed for, for the house at 611 North Friday. Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
So the steps in that, he got me a letter today about the things that need to be done would be to draft a warranty deed. He would prefer that the family's attorney draft that because he can't really work for them and us. He said he's willing to do that, just draft it, but then they would, they would have to hire somebody to do that. So if he does that, he needs to spell out that I'll do this, but I'm working for the board, not for you. And then get title insurance, we should cover that. And then, and then he need tax information. He can work through that with getting them the documentation they need for tax purposes for a charitable donation. And then, and then a validation questionnaire, you know, to spell out what they know about the property. So those are the steps that need to happen, and I just got this today, so I'm going to have him working on that, try to get it done as soon as we can. So that's where we're at on that. Didn't really have much more to report on that. We're still working. Anybody had any questions?
I seen you did a little segment on it with the HGTV.
Oh, yeah, yeah. When Carolyn was working on that video, we got permission from Tom to go over there. If anybody'd like to look at the house, you hit me up, we'll tell them, let us go take a look.
Something I think we can make sure of, let people know that what he did.
Yeah.
Of course, giving us that house was pretty good. Nice of him to do that.
Yes, yes, it is. And he's, he's excited about it and the opportunities for, for the kids. So as soon as we get this done, we'll make sure and publicize that.
Okay. Captain Lattke.
Doing some reconsidering, not ready to approve this yet, but in our discussions last month and reconsidering how could we work this around and still get what we need, instead of doing one unit each year and pushing that off, going ahead and trying to do two units. So this summer, trying to do one of the units on the old gym and one on the auditorium. I think we could get the same, they're pretty close, so we could get one on each area with one crane. That way, we have one good unit in each area for the next few years. Then come back the following year, get both of them into cafeteria. Might be a little more expensive because we need to add a gas line to that to make it heating and air. And then come back and do the two on the band. And then a few years later, get the other two on the gym and auditorium. And then we throw in that one in the art room, since it's right in that same area. And then we stop one on the, a smaller unit on the tech lab. One thing to consider would be adding separate units in the main gym. Right now, to cool the gym, we have to run the whole chiller system that chills the entire building. Now, we can shut off air handlers in the rooms. That helps, but we're still piping that cold water through the whole building. We've got a lot of summer stuff going on. If you've sat in there and watched a ballgame with no air conditioning, it's 110 degrees in there, it's tough. So it would be nice to cool that and be more economical about it. And then a new control system. They're looking at numbers. I don't, I don't have a good guess for what that's going to cost, so we're talking new thermostats and computer system. Would probably mean new components in every air handler. Our system's becoming obsolete, so... So how would we afford to do that? The key thing, there was the bus purchase, that $80,000 bus purchase. Instead of paying for that outright, pay off the current lease purchase that we have. The newer activity bus that we purchased a few years ago, we owe $40,000 on it, a little under. We could pay that lease purchase off, and then that would extend this bus payment six years. So an additional three years is what we'd be looking at. So pay off the current lease purchase rather than paying 80,000 cash upfront for, for the bus, but pay off our current one. And that'll free up, you know, from 80 to 40, that'll free up some cash to be able to do that, heating and air system this summer. A few of the other things, I don't have on here, some, I don't think these will be too expensive, but Safe Defend upgrades. We have like, we have a box in the auditorium, but we really don't need that safe there. We just need an activation module that, you know, if there's an incident, we can just set the alarm off, we go somewhere else to lock down. So having that safe in there with the materials doesn't do us a whole lot of good in the auditorium and the gym. Putting those activation modules maybe at everybody's desk and the front offices. So it'd just be a fingerprint swipe to be able to do that. So a few of those things. Camera system, we've got a basic system in. We've got a lot of areas that we don't cover or in the head building. We don't have any cameras here at the library. There's some areas on the exterior and a few areas on the interior that need to add. And then a door lock system would be same as our control system for heating and air. It's becoming obsolete, we need to upgrade that. So a few other things need to consider. But getting closer on the plan here, any thoughts on the heating and air system and the bus situation?
So we've still got it split out with two units on the old gym and two in the auditorium. Have you heard from anybody of one unit can do those, what they want?
No, no. I'll start that, those discussions here this week.
Okay.
If we're comfortable kind of with that, where we're headed with that, we're looking at formal approval of this plan next meeting. More efficient use of our, of the crane and the labor and all that to put two units in and freeing up that cash with just extending the lease purchase, basically.
And you're comfortable with just $10,000 for roof maintenance?
For now, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Nothing major going on right now?
Nope.
Okay, good.
Nope, just constant little spots.
Where it puts.
Yeah. Okay. Hope you have other thoughts. Derek and I were discussing, we did have a, you know, a facility committee when we were really looking at the board, or at the boiler system. And it was the president and vice president, and then Mitch Minnis helped us out as part of the site council. Thoughts on that would be worth to put together that committee again and look at some of those things. Maybe have more detailed discussions before we have our next meeting, have some info from some others. Okay. Listen about that.
All right. Board member activities. Carl?
No, don't have any.
Go ahead.
Okay. Open the apple activity. Look, got a plate to watch.
Yep, same for you.
All right, Debbie.
Okay. So special ed go up. For about a year and a half, they've been trying to figure out what to do with Haskins because there have been a lot of issues with that building. To get the HVAC and the roof up to repair right now, within the next 10 years, we're looking at $600,000. But they're also looking at where to go with that program. And they've looked at different places around Pratt, trying to find some other options for where to house the program other than it Haskins where it is now. You can't see it on the, the one that I gave you, but the, on this one, you can see that this part of Haskins in the first plan is separate demolition. And then on the other one, there's, it should be blue on the bottom part of that building, and that's the recommendation for the second proposal. Anyway, what we've been talking about is finding a better, something that better fits the needs for the kids that are part of that program. And Josh, feel free to jump in at any time. The group that's been working on it is superintendents, staff, they had contractors come and talk to us at the last meeting, and they've come up with a couple proposals. And the reason I'm bringing it to you is because it's going to end up costing all of the schools as much as 10% more a year to have the kids in one of these facilities. With the repair of the roof and the HVAC system in Haskins, it's still not going to take, meet all of the needs that got there. There's still, just like with us, they need to look at the locking system, the kids, they've got some runners in there, so they may have to make sure that the place is secured. There were some asbestos things that, that they were looking at. The asbestos abatement is included in the remodel amounts, and we're looking at with redoing Haskins, they would not do the demolition of the other part until they got everything done. So in the course of like six to eight months, they would be making changes in Haskins and then switching those places over. I'm not making myself very clear, but while they're closing part of the building for asbestos abatement and renovations, they would still have that other part of the building to move some of those programs instead of closing up that whole school now. And then when that's all done, then they would go back and do the demolition of that part of the building, which still gives them that whole campus, basically with the playground and it's all fenced in, and it's in a residential setting. Will be complete interior upgrades, roof replacement. All the windows are really old and you can see some, they need to be redone whether, whether they do the whole thing, you know, the whole renovation or not. There would be additional parking, but part of that can be, can be taken care of by just adding some spaces where the demo is, is going to happen. The demo would cost about $66,000, but the budget is 2.16 million up to 2.63 for option number one. Option number two would be to build a site-specific location just adjacent to the current SCK SEC office building. It would be on the south side, so it would be right next to the community college. They would have to install a new, additional parking, playground, and it's smaller than the Haskins renovation, but it would be built to the specific needs of the students that we have in there. We listened for about an hour and a half to the pros and cons and, and what they were, what they were suggesting as far as how they were going to do all the demolition and everything. But what it came down to finally was, we asked the, the staff who currently use that facility and their preferences to go with renovating Haskins. Part of that has to do with just the security issues and the size at the current office location. It's close to the highway, and they have kids who run away. You know, are they going to get on the campus and are they going to run up to the highway? Are they going to get into the administrative building? Just last week, they had a student too, had to be removed by the police because he attacked two of the staff members. They both had to have medical care, and that's an ongoing thing. Well, that's fine with the staff that he's got there, but if he gets it to the rest of the building, are the support staff going to know how to deal with a kid like that? Because they haven't had the, the special ed training. So they were all more in favor of sticking with what they know and making the upgrades of the space that they're at instead of going to the other. So the, it would also include a life skills program to, last year, we didn't have, they closed Sharon Springs. So this is the second year of only having one life skills program, and they want to put in another one. So there could be the possibility with both of these that we could have a life skills component in this. Do you know what I'm talking about? Where they have, they have a house where the, the students go and they do budgeting, they do cooking, they, they learn how to live independently. And we could replicate some of that in Haskins with that. Kiowa County would like to have a PBS program. Kingford would like to have the life skills program. If we don't switch to that, there's a possibility that there could be a life skills program placed in Stafford. Josh and I talked about this the other day. How do you justify, how do we justify the cost of it? If we do nothing, where do the students go? If we do all of this and we still, we have about 20 kids that are involved in this, that's $125,000 per student. So anyway, you look at it, it's a lot of money.
How many from St. John go down there?
None.
Right now? What was the last year we had the students down there?
Yeah, went down there for a while last year.
Couple years ago, yeah.
Wasn't one of them down there first part last year?
It's, it's been for several years we had somebody down there, but...
It's been two years.
It's been two years. Before that, we had somebody down there for 10 years, 12 years.
And what's, I guess I don't understand why we are a part of it when we don't have anybody down there.
Well, that's the, the co-op exists, well, it's just that, it's a co-op, so we share in the costs. So whether we have one special ed kid in our district or we have 50, we pay the same. And they hire the people and send them out here. Same thing with this. We have this special school for kids that have high needs, violence and those things that we still have to educate that we don't want, not that we don't want them, but that we can't have them in the regular school setting. They have to go somewhere. And whether we've got five kids that we send down there or zero, we share in that cost with all the other districts. So that's how it's set up with the co-op.
And how's that cost derived again? Is it due basically from our school?
Enrollment, yeah. And just strict enrollment, has nothing to do with special ed usage or...
There's been one of the schools that, he wanted to not be, this was two years ago, he didn't... He didn't have any kids in the gifted program. So he wanted his school exempted from paying for students in the gifted program. And there was a lot of discussion about that. And it's, it's like if you start allowing people to pick and choose which part of the co-op they participate in, then you kind of lost the function of the co-op. Because we, we help each other out. You know? Maybe the kid goes to school here this year, but he moves to Stafford next year with his family. So Stafford still needs that help and the co-op will provide it regardless of where the kids are.
So the, I guess the options are, one would be do away with Haskins, get rid of it. And everybody takes their kids back and has to figure out what to do with them in their district.
Which also means contracting for behavioral therapists, speech therapists, pathologists, paras, the work program, all of those things which go under that umbrella now.
And you might have a teacher that has five of those kids in a class right now at Haskins, but they go to five different districts. Now we almost have to hire a teacher to go to each one of those. So there's still some cost. But there, between that and spending two and a half, three and a half million dollars, I, I think there's maybe some other options in there that we'll try to get out of administration. Something needs to be done. My concern is that Haskins is such an old building. Pratt decided they didn't want it anymore, didn't need it because of the asbestos and the old pipes and the sinking foundation and to throw that money. I'm afraid to be throwing good money after bad.
Does the co-op actually own it or is it still in mind? So even if they build a new building, they'd still have to deal with the old one?
Yep.
Part of this, it's, it's kind of hard to even be in there every month. It's kind of hard sometimes to, to follow the track with this because it was started when we had different people in administration there with different goals for what they wanted to get done. And the committee has tried, that's working on this, has tried really hard to, to find other options in Pratt. They looked at the old Alco building, they looked at the church that has closed. I think they've probably looked at five or six different places around town. And then they contacted, contacted these contractors who went out and put together these bids. This doesn't mean that, that we're definitely going to do it. It just, no, this is what they brought to us and I want to bring it to all of you so you know that this is something that's being discussed. And it could increase our allocation to them by 10%.
Debbie, does it have to be in that area? I mean, have they looked at other places besides just there?
I think they've looked at some other building, existing buildings that maybe they could rent. But I think that's one of those things that's maybe on the continuum between the three and a half million and doing nothing. I think there might be some other options that maybe, maybe some of the kids would just have to find another place to educate them. But I think everybody's in agreement, we have to have something for those high needs kids. It cannot, it cannot be in the regular school. But here, the bottom line for us would be, this is our, for this year, we're, you know, five and a half percent of the co-op. So we figure out all the enrollment and then out of the total, we're about five and a half percent. So the total, the total assessment from local districts would be about three and a half million. So that's what, as districts, we contribute to the co-op. That's not including gifted, that's, that's another 200 grand there. So our share is about $190,000.
We'd have to come up possibly with another 10% of the 193?
Yes. So if you figure, let's just say it's $3 million, well, that's if we pay that off over 10 years. You know, you're looking at 10% of that, basically, including interest. So we'd be looking at another $20,000 that we'd have to pay to the co-op each year until that's paid off. That's top end. That can come from our capital outlay since it's being used for a capital purchase. Right now, none of this money, you know, this all comes from our general fund. We can't fund that with capital outlay, but we can portion because they pay some of those things. But that additional fund could come from our capital outlay, which might affect our, our planning here.
Another thing that's, that's kind of affected the finances of all of this is that the state is supposed to, to help fund 92%.
92%.
And right now, we're at 80-something and probably getting less next year. So the state isn't following through with the amount they're supposed to help.
That, that's going to be the hidden cost here in moving forward. Funding is increasing based on the changes in law, but the special ed increases in, and funding is not keeping up with inflation. So we're going backwards in that area. So we will continue to see these numbers go up.
Are there two schools that opt out of the gifted?
Yes. That was set up initially when this whole thing was started. So Pratt and...
Is it Skyline?
Yeah, Pratt and Skyline.
They had their own staff already.
Yeah. So they have their own program, they pay for it themselves, but...
Are we at the northern end?
Yes. Goes...
The next one north of us.
Great Bend, Barton County.
Do they have these same problems?
Yeah. Yeah, probably less so, just because Great Bend sponsors that. So all of the special ed employees are employed by Great Bend School District. And, you know, they're bigger, you know, we don't have a school district that size that has the facilities that they do. So we're, we're different in that we're interlocal, that, you know, it's a separate office, it's a separate board. And it's tough. It's, it's kind of dysfunctional when you have 15 districts and seven counties and everybody trying to agree on what to do. And they try their best. I didn't mean that it's, the organization is dysfunctional.
So these schools that do their own, Josh, do they get some funding themselves? You said like Skyline, they're not a member of this?
It's only for their gifted program.
Yeah, that's just for their gifted program. So they hire a gifted teacher and they don't pay anything to the co-op, just for that part of it. You know, if they would have a lawsuit because they're not doing their gifted part right, then that's on them. You know, that's a big part of being a part of the co-op is that if, if we get sued over not doing the special ed plan correctly, then that's on the co-op to, it's on everybody in the co-op to share in that legal cost.
There is a co-op out of Larter too. Is it Tri-County?
Yeah, getting out of a co-op is, is next to impossible. The State Department of Education gets involved and I think the Secretary of State has to look at it and approve those agreements.
We've been having, on an average, for the last five meetings, we've been having 13, 12 or 13 of the 15 people on the board in attendance and that didn't happen the last few years. We were having a lot of personnel issues and, and people just got fed up with it, didn't go. And I see some things, some really positive things happening with the director and the assistant directors that we've got now, but this isn't going to change, it's not going to go away.
I don't have a good answer for the situation. I can't tell you that this needs to happen and they're screwing it up by throwing these $3 million numbers at us. That maybe won't be able to do, I don't know.
The superintendents, you meet tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
And then we meet, because it's spring break for almost everybody, we're just having a phone meeting on Monday. That's Monday, so I don't anticipate that we'll have any substantive discussions on this until we're all back together. But, yeah, it was, it was the longest meeting we've had so far, but it was, it was informative and they answered a lot of questions, both the co-op and the contractor, co-op staff and the contractors. They got hit with a lot. That's my report.
Thank you. All right, Administrator.
Mr. White's report, state assessments, we're getting rolling on those here after spring break. National Honor Society inducted new members, they're listed there for you. Substate basketball went well. Kids represented us very well. Cheerleaders, fans, players, coaches, everybody. I was very proud of their efforts. Boys are moving on and the girls came up short, as you know. So we're headed, 10:30, is that when we're doing the send-off? 10:30 is the send-off on Wednesday. So if you can make it up, we'll do a quick run-through pep rally. So play at 4:45 in Dodge City at the Casino Arena, not at the college. We had our junior high music festival. I don't even know how many schools we had here. Five, I think. And there were just kids everywhere. Lots of performances all day. Went pretty well. Staff worked, worked half the day and did professional development for half a day. So I think it was a success overall. Junior High Scholars Bowl's today and we start some track and golf after spring break. Again, Mr. White's over parent teachers conferences tonight and we're doing pre-enrollment for the students. Everybody is supposed to have their classes picked by today for, for the conferences. On my report, I'm starting that KASB leadership for tomorrow. Go to Stockton and Nest City on Thursday and Friday of spring break. That's our first visit. So if this is a positive experience for me, you know, board members are welcome to do that. If that's something you'd be interested in, I'll have some more information for you. Go around and see, see what other schools are doing. Already mentioned the music festival, our professional development, we're, we're pretty much done with our schedule. We have one more session here in April, just a two-hour session. But we've been doing a lot of work on the trauma-informed and identifying students at risk, social, emotional learning. Calendar update. I didn't have a chance to get with the committees with short turnaround between our late February meeting and me being gone for part of that time. But we've, we've met and I don't anticipate many changes from what the draft I had before was. But get, or get a survey out to staff about that. But the committee has met and we'll finalize that for the next meeting. I don't have much for you on legislative update. It's been kind of quiet. There's things going on with vouchers and things like that. But I've followed a whole lot of that. Special ed co-op, already covered that. Negotiations, meant to look and see who's on that committee. I'll get with whoever that is. Do you guys know?
It's me and somebody. I don't remember. It's Debbie, I think.
Okay, I'll get with whoever's on that. I'll double check and get with you on that. We need to have a letter to the association about things we intend to discuss in negotiations at the end of this month. So I'll touch base with you on that. One more item that is something we need to keep our eye on. The coronavirus situation in, in the United States is causing some issues. What does that mean for us? I don't have any idea. I think it's still early that people don't know a lot of the facts. But there's been schools that have had to cancel classes. You might have seen even some of our congressmen have self-quarantined because they've been exposed to it. So we could have students or staff that would need to be quarantined because they've been exposed. Maybe by the time it gets here, we'll know more about it, we won't have to do any of that. If we have it in our school, we may have to cancel classes for a period of time. But what does that mean? You know, Mr. White and I have talked that how would we, if a kid has to be out of school for two or three weeks, what are we going to do to make sure that kid is educated? So we've been working on some of that, but we don't want to freak out about it, but we want to be thinking about what if? What if we have to deal with this and, and address the situation? So again, we're not freaking out about it, but there's some issues to work through. We just want to be prepared. So we're on top of it and thinking about it, but not, not freaking out yet.
There was a, a school group that was, that left Wichita the other day to go to Italy. And I haven't heard what had happened to that group.
Stayed there.
Italy's pretty much shut down and those kids were over there.
We won't be going on any cruises or anything. So I just want to let you know, we're looking at it. It's on our radar. We're just, there's no need to put any information out. We don't know anything yet. We're looking at it. That's all I have from our report.
Okay. Executive session.
I need just a quick, five-minute executive session. Just me, I guess. There will be no action after this, so...
Yeah, there's no camera, the jury's here.
I think it's running. I don't know that for sure. So we're going to, we're going to step next door and just, I already covered that with David, but so we'll just, we'll just leave the room, don't worry about it.
Do you need a motion?
Yep, yeah.
Mr. President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss the performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA with Mr. Meyer to be included at the return to open session at 7:52.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second that the board go into the executive session to discuss the performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA with Mr. Meyer to be included and we return to open session at 7:52. All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. Closing business items.
Really nothing new, just these items we've had lingering in the calendar, the house and the direct commission and the handbook stuff we've got to, procedural stuff we've got to approve.
Okay. Motion for adjournment?
It's moved to adjourn.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. No same time, motion carried.